I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission, July 29th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, regular meeting. We do have a quorum. First item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the June 24th, 2025, regular meeting and July 15th, 2025 workshop. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. There are no public comments this evening. Items number three and four have deferred. Is that correct, Mr. Logan?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. So we'll move on to item number five. Site plan, Seven Brew, two new buildings of 510 and 238 square feet on 0.66 acres requested by Matthew Miller. Property located at 5345 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 15M, group C, parcel six, C2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by Who Brew LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is a request for site plan approval for a new Seven Brew coffee shop. This would be located on Murfreesboro Road. And you can see there in the photo, or the image, rather, this is the carpenters training trust, Mid-South Carpenters, and so this site is just in front of it. And it's also next door to what was Miracle Baptist Church and now, I believe, the signs says Emmanuel Baptist Church. But that give you a general location of where they're proposing to put this coffee shop. Let me zoom. Zooming in, you can see it's kind of a irregular shaped lot, but here's the church on the right and then the Mid-South facilities up here to the top left. And zoning is C2 highway service, so that's commercial zoning, so there's no issue with the use. These are photos taken from the site. So Mid-South Carpenters is to the left here in this photo. And then this will be looking towards Smyrna. So this is Murfreesboro Road out here where I'm pointing. So total square footage, the main building, which is pictured on the screen, would be 510 square feet. And then they have a cooler, I believe there's a cooler and storage building, is what they're calling it, but that would be 238 square feet. Anyway, you can see there in the rendering, architectural rendering, what they're proposing. Also, you may have seen there's one under construction, I believe, in Smyrna currently, and that's near, I think it's near the Champies over there. Yeah. So here's another view of the building. And you can see they are proposing the brick on the exterior and then the blue trim and And then here's a digital representation of the materials board. So that has all the colors of the trim and flashing and then the two different colors of brick, the lighter brick and then the darker at the bottom is actually called, well, the color's black pearl at the bottom, the bottom brick. Let's move to the site plan. Okay, so we talked last month about the queuing and how the traffic would go around the building. So here's your two buildings. There's the main kitchen area and then the storage building that's smaller. So Murfreesboro Road is to the left in this image. And then, so you probably remember last workshop, they have a dual lane drive-through. And at the last meeting, two weeks ago, they had a narrow opening or cut-through area, but they've widened that quite a bit. So that's what we're seeing here on this site plan. And the dumpster enclosure is also, it's also been moved in the last two weeks. So it's shown here. It was much further down the driveway to the rear. They've got the cross-access easements, so back to the north and south. And then the sidewalk along Murfreesboro Road is also shown, of course, just like it was at the workshop. And let's see. There's nine parking spaces being provided. That includes eight standard parking spaces and one ADA space. So the parking is sufficient. There's no issues there. And then this is the landscape plan. So you can see all the plantings on the perimeter of the lot and then plantings along Murfreesboro Road. And then they have also some canopy trees in the rear, as well as there's a tree there and a tree down to the southeast. That covers everything from the planning side, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Lott. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Could you go to 66 of 175, please?
Okay.
Nope, at 65? There you go.
Okay.
All right. So they, the developer and their engineer has been working very closely with us. You remember at the workshop, they had quite a few comments. They've knocked a lot of them out. The main ones that are still remaining is there's a pipe coming here. That's their property line. It's actually off their property line. They're also grading out into here off of their property. So we have requested a letter from the owners of these properties agreeing that they're going to give that easement. And they're working on that. Should have it any day, but it's not here today. And the other one is their stormwater system. I requested some more detailed calculations and those have not arrived yet. Again, I just spoke with the developer and they're in process, just about finished, but not here today.
Thank you, sir. As a representative for this project, if you would, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Bob Gage, 100 Powell Place, 1230. I'll give you a card as I'm headed out. Yes, sir. We have been working on the review comments. We've got just about everything addressed. I do have a letter coming from the property owners regarding those easements. I should have those, I should have had them by the end of the day today, but I'll have them tomorrow for sure. So I've got everything taken care of. We should have all comments addressed and the letters in hand for this middle on Monday.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
So, Mr. Lott, so there was 21 comments from the staff report two weeks ago. In our packet, it still shows, it's still 21, so there's still two outstanding?
Well, honestly, on the utility side, Scott Tatalovich added some. And so he, on the engineering side, they went down by about 10 and Scott added a few. And that's just, they're very detailed comments on Scott's sites. It's really more for information for them than it is anything to do with the site plan. But again, their engineers should have no problem getting those worked up in time for, if y'all choose to defer next month's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, you know my feeling, you know, I think we've been very consistent through the years. We want everything cleaned up.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's my comment.
Any other comments? Here. We entertain a motion.
To defer?
Motion to defer. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll see you next month, sir.
Quick question. Do I need to come to the workshop as well?
I do.
Two more meetings?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number six. Final plat, Mission Hills, Section 2A. 23 lots on 6.17 acres requested by SEC, Inc. Property located on Waldron Road, tax map 29, parcel 22.02, R3 high-density residential zoning district, property owned by Meritage Homes of Tennessee, Inc. Mr. Logan.
So this is a final plat request for Mission Hills, Section 2A. And you can see here on the screen, this is Waldron Road running north and south. So this is all on the east side of Waldron Road. And then this large area of homes is Woodland Hills. And then this is I-24 at the upper right. So zooming in, see a little bit more detail of all the residential area. So these lots to the left in this image are from the earlier phase of Mission Hills. So those have already been platted. And the zoning map, the green color, is R3, which is high-density residential. So of course, Mission Hills, the whole area there is about 120 acres. And then, of course, there's a lot more properties to the south going toward Blair Road that are also zoned R3. Here's a site photo of the street that's been constructed. So this, this is an overall map that shows all of the phases and future sections. So you can see this part here that's grayed out is Section 2A. So that's how it fits into the rest of the puzzle. And then here's a future plat. So this shows Vanguard Drive that comes in from Waldron Road and then runs to the east. And then that starts Lot 16 where I'm pointing, and that runs 16 through Lot 26. And then here on the bottom is Lot 269 through 258. So it's a total of 23 lots. And the acreage here is about, it's 6.17 acres. All the streets or all of Vanguard shows the sidewalk that's required by the city. And then I didn't mention, but this area over here is the male kiosk area. All the street. And there's no planning comments. I'll turn it over to Mr. Lott. Thanks.
On Friday, we were working feverishly with the engineer, sending plans and comments back and forth. We uploaded our final upload onto Civic Clerk at 11:30. They sent the final plat back to us on 11:50. So there is one comment outstanding on your, on your comments, but we do have a plat in hand where that one was addressed.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments from the board? We entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the plat, that Gary reference that they have on hand that's not in our packet.
Second. Motion is made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven. Site plan, Cheney Place, 50 townhomes on 4.30 acres requested by SEC, Inc. Property located at 237 Cheney Boulevard, tax map 28, parcel 10 and 11, R3 high-density residential zoning district, property owned by Old South Properties, Inc. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is a site plan request for Cheney Place. And this project was here a little over two years ago and received approval at that time. And since construction never started, the approval lapsed, so they had to return to this body again to get approval. So the 24-month time limit had lapsed. So this is the site here outlined in blue. This is Laverne High School, the bottom right. And then Chaney Woods is just to the south and across the street. And then this is Summit Lane that goes up the rear side of this development. And it's, all of these are sort of, the neighborhoods have been there for a long time, so not, has not been a lot of new development lately in this area. This is a 50-town home, proposing 50 townhomes. And let me move to the photos. So the zoning here is R3, of course, which is high-density residential. And then here's a photo from Cheney, Cheney Boulevard. There's a lot of trees on the site. And there was a residence on this site. I believe it was a double-wide mobile home at one point. I don't know if it has been removed. So moving on to the plan. So that's the erosion control. Okay, so this on the screen will show the entire site. So Cheney Boulevard is here to the left. And then there is an ingress egress to the north and another one to the south. So they have two ways in and out of the development. And then here in the center is the playground area that's proposed. And then the male kiosk is also located near the entrance, the north entrance. And then all the way where I'm pointing down in this area is the dumpster enclosure. And they are showing a sidewalk that will be installed along Cheney. So that's been shown and all of the required buffers are indicated for this development as well. So at this point, this is kind of unusual because it's already approved some years ago and none of that, none of the plan has changed. So there's no planning comments left and no engineering comments. So that completes the report.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? We will entertain a motion.
Motion approved as submitted.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto item number eight. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, rezoning of property requested by SEC, Inc. 13.63 acres, property located off Wheeler Street, tax map 18K, parcel six. Current zoning district, I-1 light industrial zoning district, proposed zoning district, I-2 heavy industrial zoning district, property owned by 84 lumber. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is a resounding request for 84 lumber and the site is shown on the screen. So it's outlined in blue here. And the property does touch Jefferson Pike, but the applicant is not proposing to rezone the section to the south that touches Jefferson. So roughly where I'm pointing will be the dividing line and that will begin the I-2 zoning, which is what they're requesting. See a little bit more on the zoning map, but... And this is zooming out, but you can see there's a quite a large area here. This is a gas line easement that runs to the northeast that cuts right through the property. So that's one of the main features of the ortho. When you look at it, you can see that gas line. So the dark color on this zoning map, this is I-2 heavy industrial zoning and then I-1 is the light blue. So they already have I-2 with their existing facility and they're looking to add to that and have the same zoning to the south, except the part that I mentioned earlier. It won't go all the way to Jefferson. And they do mention in their application that any vehicles or trucks that enter and exit the site will still use Wheeler, just as they do today. Most of Jefferson, this brown or brick color is R2, single-family residential zoning. It's been in place a long time. But of course, all of Wheeler is zoned I-1 industrial. And then all the way back, Jefferson, all the way back to Murfreesboro Road is industrial. And then south is this I-3 special zoning, which is also industrial to the south of And there's no technical comments on the resounding, so we have to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? We'll entertain a motion. It needs to include a favorable or non-favorable recommendation.
Make a favorable recommendation.
We have a motion for a favorable recommendation. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll be sending a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Item number nine. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, rezoning of property requested by Thomas &amp; Hutton. 32.5 acres, property located at 180 Blair Road, tax map 29, parcel 42. Current zoning district, R1 low-density residential zoning district. Proposed zoning district, R3 high-density residential zoning district, property owned by Evergreen Venture Capital LLC. Mr. Logan.
So this resounding request is for 180 Blair Road. So this site is basically, it's a square lot. It's not a irregular shaped lot, but this is on the south side of Blair just as you're approaching the curves, the sharp curves in Blair. Across the road, move to the zoning map. So it's currently R1, which is low-density residential, which is the same as the vineyards that you're seeing over here. And then to the left or to the west is Arbor Ridge. So this is zoned PDR, plain-density residential. And then on the north side, across the street from 180 is the large area of R3 zoning that I mentioned earlier when we went over Mission Hills. So this, across the road, that land, everything between 180 and Mission is already zoned R3 high-density residential. And if I go back, this one. So this is a good image that just shows how many lots have been platted in Arbor Ridge. And then this land that's not been platted yet will be, because it's also part of Arbor Ridge. So it, Arbor Ridge will come all the way to the property lines for 180 at some point. So this site tonight's completely surrounded, well, will be completely surrounded by residential and R3 if you count the north side there of Blair. And here's some photos. So this is Blair, of course, looking more or less to the east. So you've got the large lot, large estate lots on the left and then the Arbor Ridge property and 180 Blair's on the right.
Okay, Bo, when you say the large estate lots on the left, those are currently zoned R3 though, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes. Some people say estate lots to mean five acres or greater. So it's a general planning term. When you, when you say they live on estate lots, not necessarily, I'm not referring to zoning. They are zoned R3, but they're large lots. So this photo is the remnant, there's several remnants on this property. Most of you know there was an explosion here some years ago. But yeah, it kind of looks like Midnight in the Garden of Good and Evil or something. But anyway, there it is. They're talking about how cool the picture is over here, so I thought I'd throw that in. Maybe they can incorporate that into the development. That's just the application. So I believe I've covered everything. So we happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Do we have a representative here?
Do we have a representative this evening?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Campbell Dodd and my address is 828 Belton Drive, Nashville, Tennessee.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. The engineering department does have a comment.
Excuse us, sir.
Please, thank you.
Okay. Look, can you go back, go back to 160?
These, the, our department comments, like at the workshop, are not, do not require a reply from, or a resubmital of any kind. Just wanted to make it clear that the extra density of R3 versus R1, engineering department believes, will require improvements on Blair Road, including a widening of Blair Road, potentially flattening this curve, potentially, and possibly some other items. That'll be determined when the site plans come in and we get to talk to the engineers and the traffic study.
Thank you. Please continue, sir.
I'm here representing the owners and want to, as he's talked about, some road improvements. We know that we're going to have to be doing that. We're losing a little bit of acreage to do that, in my opinion, almost quite a bit. It seems to be, it's going to be about 10 acres between the road improvements and development of widening the road up there, Blair Road as well. Because there's going to be a road that'll go through to connect to the other subdivision that's not up there yet.
Questions or comments from the board?
Is that going to be a problem as far as the road improvements?
We don't see that at this point, no, sir.
Okay. That, that was the big discussion with the workshop was that road improvements are going to have to occur for this area. So...
Do you understand that the track, we're requesting a traffic study, meaning that's on the cards too?
Say that again.
You understand that we're looking for a traffic study?
Yes.
For the area, because obviously it is a very busy road and a very problematic road for the city and we want to have the road improvements done for, you know, safety.
Yes.
Questions or comments? Any for us, sir?
Thank you.
We entertain a motion.
I think most send a favorable recommendation to Mayor Alderman.
One more time, sir.
A favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Graham. We have a motion for a favorable recommendation. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay who will be sending a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number 10. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, new zoning ordinance and zoning map. Mr. Brown?
Basically, inside the packet, you should have the proposed zoning ordinance that has the changes that we've been working with legal on and just internal staff changes. So everything that we were looking at changing, we have made the changes to. So everything that you have in front of you tonight is ready for you to take action on if you see fit.
Very good. Comments from the board?
I will say that regardless of the recommendation tonight, there will still be some formatting, grammar and spelling changes, at least to this document. Those do not impact the content, but it's just cleanup that will happen between here and whenever it gets the Board of Mayor and Alderman in September.
We've been working on this project for several years and I think everyone's had a chance to review this and go through it, including the staff as well as the board. And as the mayor pointed out, there'll be some minor changes on some topographical that have been notated. But with that said, I'm going to say in a favorable recommendation to Mayor Alderman for the new zoning ordinance and zoning map.
I'd just like to make a comment.
Discussion?
Yep. Because it looks like, from our discussion, I appreciate...
Sir, Mr. Jim. Mr. Jim.
Is that a second for discussion?
No, I didn't get a chance to.
Our second for discussion. We have a motion, a second to discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were doing recommendations already.
You're free to go, sir.
Okay. All right. So thank you for the work that's been done on it because it definitely were some changes made. It does appear that a portion of Vaughn Wood is, that we're looking at, is still considered R2. Is that accurate?
Yes.
The large acres.
The, the large eighteen, I think it's roughly eighteen, eighteen and a half acres, that would, is, is being shown as R-two, yes.
Okay. And it's currently part of Vaughn Wood, so is there a reason we carved that out from? Being R-one?
As we discussed in the workshop, or as I stated in the workshop, I'm not willing to change that from R-two. To R-one with it being eighteen and a half acres, I mean, if the board so chooses, then that's up to y'all, but. With the requirement of R-one and, and R-two differences. And I know you was talking about, you know, estate also out there, I just, it makes more sense that that is going to develop as R-two if it does develop.
So I, I don't know if this was forwarded on to the rest of the board, but I know Ms. Vaughn had sent over a letter. Supporting estate residential for her property. Yes, I still have my estate residential bill I, I like to write. But I would say if we're, if we're doing R-one. For this, for specifically for Vaughn Wood, we should include. Ms. Vaughn's property because. That's what started Vaughn Wood, was that. And I know residents have, have wanted to see it all the way down to John Skinner's property, which is just that, that dead-end road area back there. But. I know that's what I've been contacted about.
So we have a motion and a second. We need to vote on this item and then anything after this point, and correct me if I'm wrong, counsel. Anything after this point, once it goes past Mayor and Alderman, can either be appealed or changed accordingly.
That's correct, and by changed accordingly, you mean a, a individual property owner could request a rezone, that's correct.
Yes.
And BOMA can make some slight changes from what Evan has said and with the last time it came through.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of your comment.
I said, BOMA, we were told before with Evan that, because it's come before BOMA once before and then sent back, BOMA, BOMA can make some minor changes to the, the overall.
That's correct, so this body just sends a favorable recommendation. Assuming the, that's how the vote shakes out, if, if this body sends a favorable recommendation, BOMA will consider that and, and that body may modify. The document that this body sends out.
Perfect.
And if you want to amend to include that as R-one with your motion, that's fine too, just make the recommendation with that amendment and then we'll fix them out.
So we have a motion and a second.
I'm willing to withdraw my second so that he can make a modification if he would like.
I will.
So both motions have been withdrawn at this point, I will entertain a motion for a favorable or unfavorable recommendation.
A favorable, I'm making a motion for a favorable recommendation to include, for the zoning ordinance to include. All of Vaughn Wood, including Ms. Vaughn's property and down to John Skinner's property as R-one.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will be sending a favorable recommendation with motion.
With that modification.
With the modification to the motion. Thank you, everyone, and thank you staff and attorneys, everyone for your diligence in working on this. And our final item will be bonds and letters of credit update.
Good evening, everybody, you should have the bond list in front of you, it is up to date and current, there is one expiring in August, but they are already working on that. And will be sending me the updated bond probably this week or next.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone, for your time, any adjourned?